Good afternoon, I'm now gonna call the Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Mara Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the common option for remote meetings through November thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. We are live and remote today. I'd like to ask everyone to stand in honor of my day today by helping us salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Called the meeting to order, we're gonna call a roll Commissioner Stady.
I am present.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Number three minutes, the open session meeting of June seventh.
I move approval as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of June seventh, open meeting law, in favor?
Aye.
It is it is a vote. Number four minutes of the executive session of June seventh.
If Peter's ready, I did review, will be look fine, but I'll move approval.
I'll second the motion with the stipulation that the minutes shall be held until the chair deems that they may be released.
Fine. That's a kind amendment, sure.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'm gonna jump around a bit if there's no objection. We have some folks on us here with us for opera. We have three opera awards today. And the folks, I think the folks from Franklin are here, so I don't wanna have them wait till we have. After we do opera, if there's no objections, we'll write to Carl Minor on her report of her president's golf course.
Three minutes here.
Yes.
We have three ARPA awards today, and we have our friends from the town of Franklin here with us. All three are water and sewer infrastructure related. One for the town of Franklin, ARPA one-one-seven-five, in the amount of seven-seven-nine-six-six-six thousand dollars. We have also a award for the town of Medfield in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for wastewater treatment plant, UV system replacement. And the first ever award to our friends in the easternmost part of the county in Cohasset, the amount of two-hundred-thousand dollars, again, for a water project, a beachwood water. As well, we have here Ms. Jennifer Thompson, who is the consultant for both Franklin and Plainville, formerly the Plainville TA, who we've seen a few times from Capital Strategic Solutions, and fan favorite, Mr. Peter Piggott, advisory board member from the town of Franklin.
Okay, so as you previously stated, the first one is the town of Franklin, it's water-related, water and sewer.
That's correct.
And it's seven-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-six dollars. Let's take that first.
Yeah, that's what's open. So Peter's here, I wanted two questions I wanted to say. First of all, obviously, congratulations to Franklin, Peter, this is great, obviously, for your town. Do you know what the total amount now we've given Franklin is?
I believe that they have about.
General tell you how much is left, I bet.
I may have to look it up, but this is our third water main project. We also did some stormwater work as well, so. But I can get you the figure in a minute if you need it.
This one, this project, again, for you, go ahead, Mr. Chairman. It appeared that this is not in one particular spot, but maybe several all over the town, maybe more or less? Am I reading that right?
This is, so this is to finish up phase two of the water main replacements. You'll remember, the last time we were here, we talked specifically about the Janey Avenue area and replacement of water main in that neighborhood. This continues on phase two of the Janey Avenue, but also finishes up some other areas of town that needed water replacements as well, that have that tuberculated pipe that we spoke about, that restriction in the piping because of the age. So this, this second phase will finish up the water main replacements throughout the town, improve not only the water quality, but the fire suppression capabilities. And you know, what's really important about this one is, we were fortunate to work closely with the county to get this money swiftly because we got really good bid pricing. So we were able to take, in order to do this phase two, we're able to do it this construction season, which makes a big difference because we expect it's gonna be a lot more expensive next construction season. So we really appreciate the help.
Yep, if I could just quick one more follow-up. I know, being a homeowner, it looks like you get, Franklin's getting both help for water, but indirectly, the homeowners or other are gonna benefit for insurance because when you improve the fire flow and the fire quality, that has an indirect effect on insurance rating, am I right, Jennifer?
That's absolutely right. So this will improve the fire flows throughout the town.
Right, which is great, that's great news, congratulations, it's great.
Thank you. Peter, any comment about this opera award to town of Franklin?
Just thanking the county so much for working so hard to give us and other communities all of as many funds as they can request to use for the various projects. And to have the county move as quickly as they can on these, on these monies is incredibly helpful to us. And just wanna say thank you, it just goes to show how helpful the county is to people through all the, all the entire Norfolk County. But this shows, shows how good, how professional, how efficient we are. And it's an incredible relief and assistance to the town of Franklin, I wanna thank you so much.
Great.
Pleasure, great.
Why don't we take these individuals and make a motion?
Did Peter have any comments?
I'm on set.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move if you want approval.
Sure.
I'll be glad to move the approval to the town of Franklin for the ARPA grant, the amount of seven-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-six dollars for a water main replacement and related projects per the application, so move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is official, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys. Three, Mr. Chair, we did, Jamie Helen couldn't be with us, the town manager today, but he did articulate.
Best to Jamie.
He'd like to do in the near future, given that we have a few awards left, but also the, a few have gone by to do something collectively with Jen and Peter and the town council, perhaps at a site determined by them in Franklin where some of the work's being done.
Wonderful.
Probably in the summertime.
That'd be great.
Sounds good, sounds great.
Thank you very much, all right, congratulations.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.
See you.
And I'll put it in the field on that, too. Thank you so much for calling us out order, I appreciate it, thank you.
No problem.
The members of the board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Number two, three, let's do it, three-seven-zero, three-hundred-seventy-thousand.
All right, so this is for the town of Medfield, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right, give me one second, I know I have it here, yeah. So this is again for, pretty interesting, the UV system. And the way they describe it, it's like the last checklist of things in terms of wastewater treatment. Not that I'm an expert on that, but it's, yeah, there's a series of things, it's pretty good. So congratulations to Medfield. Anybody here from Medfield?
No, they, we've been working with the town admin, they're pretty close. They have just about all of their money spoken for in the portal. So they, we, they, the first half of those funds, we did a recognition, and I think Sleif and Murby would like to do something similar once everything's in the can, but I think as we said before, they have, of course, the state house alumnus, their assistant town administrator, so he's, he's kinda running point there, and we have a good relationship, and they think they're going to probably be buttoned up by the end of the summer with their entire work. So that might be a good time to kind of gather and take off all of the other projects, but a lot of it is, again, wastewater in nature.
I remember the playground project, and I heard they're very close to getting all the money they need for that, too, so. Some good things happening for Medfield, just good. If you want, Mr. Chairman, I'll move it, I'll move the town of Medfield, the sum of three-hundred-seventy-thousand dollars for an ARPA award. Again, this is more or less for UV system, to help out the wastewater treatment plant, and the other items as articulated in your application, so move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is official, three-hundred-seventy-thousand.
Hey, for the first time, we're going to Cohasset.
Third, third one is Cohasset, go ahead.
Up first.
If you'd like background, Mr. Chair, Cohasset is receiving one-point-six million dollars from the county, this is two-hundred-thousand for their first award, their total amount is one-point-six. They have three or four applications that are also in process at varying stages, level twos and threes. So we also will anticipate additional awards in short order from them as well. They, they have a pretty strategic plan as to how to utilize these funds. They're not using revenue replacement, they're one of the communities that gave that benefit back to their colleagues. So we will probably be hearing from them again soon, and likewise with Franklin and Medfield. Perhaps find a time, perhaps in the summer, to go out to Cohasset. Maybe Friday.
Yeah.
Well, maybe not a Friday, maybe not, with free traffic.
That's true, that's true.
They were pretty specific, too, they named the streets for where it was going, it was pretty good, so, yeah. I'll move, I'd be glad to move then the approval to the town of Cohasset in a sum of two-hundred-thousand dollars for water service and fire flow protection. It's termed a beachwood water project, but it does gonna, it's gonna impact several streets in the area. And so I'll move that as articulated, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That concludes ARPA awards for today, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Back to number five.
Have Carl.
Appointment. Carl, come on up and sit in the hot seat. Carl Minor, superintendent of Wallace and Recreation Facility is here today for a brief
How do you feel?
An update on a beautiful golf day, good afternoon, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
We're good.
Good, good. John had thought it'd be nice if I went over all these projects we had done last several years at the golf course. First, I would like to thank the commissioners and advisory board for appropriating the monies to get all the projects done. So I'll go down the list here, do you have that in packet?
I do.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. The new playground was completed, and that's all set.
Yep.
Very nice to get quite a bit of use on it. We removed the original benches and picnic tables back from nineteen seventy-seven, and four new pads and installed new ones. Nine benches, ten picnic tables, and trash receptacles. We added height to the handball and tennis practice wall, six feet. Did tennis court lighting. House door lighting on clubhouse. We installed additional security cameras for the cart barn and the surrounding area. We have a new roof on the maintenance facility. We did the parking lot paving and relined it. We did steps by the clubhouse, fourteenth tee, removed the steps on the fifteenth hole, installed a walking path to the tee. We have new signage on West Quantum Street at the clubhouse, and soon to be installed on Granite Ave. We installed additional protective netting on the twelfth hole to protect neighbors from golf balls, that's fifty feet high and fifty feet wide. Doing a cart path from second tee to third tee. The bids for that will be open June twenty-eighth. A G-one cloud-based tee time reservation system was installed. Quite a bit. John told me that we probably spent somewhere on nine-hundred-thousand dollars on all that.
Yeah, he gave me that. I was, I was surprised it was that high, to be honest with you. It's okay, I don't doubt his focus.
Playground, too, with south lose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the two thousand and twenty-four capital projects, we're doing a new restroom on the course. Fuel pump upgrades, golf course upgrades, and cedar fence repair.
Now, when we say cedar fence.
That's the fence coming in to the golf course on the right.
Okay.
We're missing a couple panels there. And it's a little wrecked down by the maintenance facility, so.
I wouldn't even, do you know how old that is?
Nineteen ninety-five, I believe. So that's just to fix it up right now.
Yeah, that's fine.
I was told.
I hear it's kinda tough to get cedar. I think this is a rumor, I was trying to do it myself, and suddenly supply chain, but, you know. Have you thought about an alternative if you can't get it, or are you pretty, you got a commitment?
I haven't.
Okay, I'm just asking, just asking. I mean, cedar's tough to get, but.
Some projects for the future were in need of a golf course irrigation system, a new one. The clubhouse, we had talked about a new clubhouse years ago. And sooner or later, we're gonna have to do a complete renovation of the tennis courts and the fencing around them. The fencing around them is original, nineteen seventy-seven, so those, it's, it's starting to. It is time. And we have patched up the courts two, two years ago, I think, but they're starting to crack already. That, I was told by the court guy that it's really just a Band-Aid, and it's gonna come through again.
And needless to say, tennis is taking a giant step forward.
It sure is.
Eastern map. The mayor was mentioning to me, two years ago, we'd go by the tennis courts and the kids would be playing street hockey. That's not the case anymore. They're playing tennis, which is what they're for, but they're not cheap. I think it's a great program for people, just, of course, we want it to be used, but yeah, if we have to upgrade them, we're gonna have to upgrade them because tennis is the new thing, I guess, and it's been very popular.
And pickleball.
And pickleball, yes, I was gonna get to that, I did get a thank you for the whatever we did on the pickleball court, did we raise the?
All we did is reline it.
Okay.
And on the existing tennis courts, in a different color.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, any comment here? This is, we're making strides at the golf course, I you know, we've got some partners there, and we wanna keep going, I think. Go ahead.
Couple of quick ones, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Three, if I have, one is, I remember the dedication, which was terrific, you know, for everybody. You had talked about, you had ordered the new benches, your pointer, have they all arrived now, have the new benches all arrived?
They're all ready, they've been installed.
Beautiful, so check it out, terrific. Second thing, I remember we had a little vandalism during the winter, I think it was, maybe? And there were some incidents that took place. Did we get any kind of insurance proceeds on that, has that been turned over?
I can't answer that, I thought we did.
Can you check on that?
Yeah.
Maybe follow up with John when he gets back? Just to see if there's any insurance money that may have been coming, not coming, or whatever for the county. And the third thing, the playground, which is great, you said it's getting a lot of use, so you just, what are you saying, is it, you probably can't really tell, but looks like it's a lot of young families are they using it, and, yeah.
And some people go out there and do their zumba thing in the morning, and and have a cup of coffee, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably too soon, thank you, Macau. But those projects for the future, all of them are gonna have a certain number of value. You know, when you talk about irrigation, that you could get a number for, a clubhouse, and then maybe the renovation. Maybe something you could look at with the chair's permission, obviously. In the next months coming up, or whatever, planning purposes, get some idea of some numbers together, just help us plan, you know.
Did we have a number for the irrigation before?
I did, I think it was one-point-six before, but you can at least put twenty percent more on that.
Okay, and, and.
It was a clubhouse, we had a number for it, too.
Well, we're not copycats, but the great city of Quincy's put a new clubhouse at Furnish Brook. And he put the mayor. We know and love the mayor, he's very aggressive, he put thirteen-point-nine million in the budget, just a clubhouse. And he sent in, in this budget, which is gonna pass, I guess it passed last week, last Monday night or next week, the whole rendering, everything. So there's a ballpark figure, I don't think it's gotta be exact, they don't have the space we have, it's in the middle of it, you know, very nice neighborhood up the hill there, but he has that ability to, you know, he put it on his pocket, cop, and so.
Wow.
Raise it by, whatever, by taxation, so, but I can guarantee he's gonna do it.
Yeah.
And that's that's gonna bring some questions to you, and Peter and I, and Carl's probably already heard of by our members in golf. You know, actually talked to a regular there, and first thing he said is, oh, when are we gonna get a new club? I'd like to prioritize those last three, and if irrigation is more important, that's fine. Because I, I believe it, I believe it is, I don't think that, I mean, the clubhouse needs work.
Yeah.
I don't think it's as important as irrigation, but it's important, you know. You know, the way things have been playing out here, you know, maybe we can do something, and I just, I just don't wanna say it until we, fine, fine.
I mean, you could even maybe even do a, a modernization, or even an addition, or something like that, rather than do a whole new clubhouse.
We did have a plan, the Frank Haggerty.
That's a lot of money.
Frank Haggerty.
I thought we had one.
Joe Conley and Paul.
Yeah.
Paul, Paul, Paul Conley. We're on a little committee, because I went for a meeting in Tokyo, I met the guy. It is in John's office.
Okay.
Frank left it.
All right, well.
I mean, we have multiple ways to look at it and tackle it, between capital planning, ARPA, people can get our state reps, I hope we can, you know, but, you know, just a thought. But it'd be nice to see what you think, you and your team think of your priorities of that list here, that's always helpful. I mean, your projects are already listed here, the restroom on the course, some course upgrades, what's course upgrading mean, what's that mean? They tackle a few holes at a time, yeah.
Yeah, we're always doing a hole or two every year or something, right? Yeah. We'll build it, it's usually a company from England that comes in and does something, you know. So always something to be done there.
And you're getting a lot of activity, right, a lot of use. I mean, we keep getting these charity requests, too.
Two more today.
Yeah, I saw that, but you're getting a lot of activity, which is terrific.
How's the volume this year?
How's what?
Volume?
Yeah, June, June is a little down, I think, just because of the rain, of course, but it's pretty good. I don't have the exact numbers for you.
Okay.
And this summer, we'll go over the rates of the other golf courses and give you some recommendations for next year's rates, which would be in the spring.
Course looked great when we were there the other day for the actual, it really did.
Yeah.
Very good.
When do we do that, the rates for next year, in the fall? Or do we do that in the winter? We've done it a couple of times.
We have done it during the winter before, but we wanna.
Just set the rates. And also, you know, memberships, and you know, there's a fine line between membership and non-members, right? Because you wanna keep it, yeah. I'm upset, that's great job, just, I think, a little follow-up.
So this, we, this is, this is June of twenty-three.
Yeah.
Unless we're here, otherwise, and we probably should do this yearly, if not more, because you're here for your budget, but every year.
Yeah, great job.
We're gonna talk about the future, we're gonna talk about irrigation, clubhouse, and renovation tennis courts and that. And fencing around them, unless our ship comes in, well, we'd still take it, take it in that order. I mean, I'll leave it up to you, you know, professional opinion. I'm sure the irrigation is very, very important, you don't see it, but, you know. How old do you think the present irrigation is?
It's original, nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-six, when it was built.
Is that something, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, is that something you could break into, like, like, year one, do this, year two, do that?
You might be able to do that.
It's like a person, reckless with them, they might do the left lawn, the right lawn, could this be done sort of piecemeal a little bit, too? Or is that?
We have upgraded it quite a bit, but it's really best to get it done right away.
Yeah, we bought a bunch of new pumps over the years.
Yes.
Where does the water come from, Carl?
The pond on the golf course, and you have wells that feed it.
With wells?
Yeah.
Well, the cost of water.
That's right, no, that's good, that's good, that's a good point.
Okay. Any other questions, comments while we're here? I mean, I'm, just what we did this year, the playground and then the the parking lot, I mean, it makes a big difference if we can continue to put.
That's what I'm saying, I think some of the people, if we'd like to do, like, set a goal, and let's tackle, this is a good facility. Let's, every year, maybe make a goal of doing something in the next three, four years, it'd be great. Take that into a really, you know, into the next.
Well, Carl's done that every year.
Yeah, we've done small projects.
Well, maybe a couple of big ones, we'll say.
Couple of big, well, bigger ones, yeah, bigger ones this year, yeah.
Anyway, thank you for your report, if we need to move.
Okay, and just that we accept the report, unless you have any other questions for Carl, I don't know. You know, take his time, because it is golf season, he can come in in the winter and talk to us.
Commissioner Stady to play this summer.
There you go.
I am, I've got a friend who almost needs it as much as I do, so we're gonna try to walk him through it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do it on myself.
Be fun, be fun.
Okay, Carl, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. We'll place that on file, with an eye towards finding some money, we'll give that to Director Ronan.
He might need a hundred, push me.
Couple of million. Number five, okay, that concludes number five, number six, public comment. Mr. Buckley, if you have anybody, no, call for public comment. Every meeting, we have a session for public comment. People in Zoom land and people in prison. Okay, last call. Concludes the public comment section, number seven. Vote authorizing Chairman Joseph Shea to execute a purchase and sale agreement between the county of Norfolk and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as ex designee Carol M. Gladstone, Commissioner of the Division of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance, for the purchase of the sale of the Francis Exfilotti District Court located at one Dennis F. Ryan Parkway, Quincy, Mass. I'm just gonna turn this over briefly to Bill, but this is timely today because we're, we're gonna make, we're gonna make the timeframe out, laid out by the state, and today is a key day.
Through, Mr. Chair, as we all know, for a number of years now, we've been in dialogue with the Commonwealth about the disposition of the District Court of East Norfolk, the Francis Exfilotti District Court in Quincy. This board has done a tremendous amount of work in bringing this to fruition, as well as Director Cronin, who was doing the negotiations in conjunction with our county council, Scott Lopez. We are today at the finish line of this very long process. Before you is the document you were given last week by Scott, the purchase and sale agreements, the rider, the exhibit A, and we have from Scott a very prescribed series of votes, which we will ask you, at the conclusion of my statements, to consider voting and signing in duplicate, which will authorize Chairman Shea as well to sign those other documents I alluded to. We will have two copies, one signed, two original copies, one for our records, one for the Commonwealth, Scott's gonna join us at the Aggie tonight, just to do a handoff of the documents.
I'm gonna meet the council right before I'm in tonight at the Aggie.
And he will, he will then bring them in town tomorrow and have Commissioner Gladstone sign them as well, and then get the originals back to us, so this is really the end of a long process. Obviously, a lot of people assisted in that, very grateful to Chairman Shea for all of his intergovernmental work. There are a lot of interested parties in his home city. Did a great job bringing them all together, Commissioner Stady with your advice on pricing from all of your professional experience, and Commissioner Collins with the great now having voted for two sales of kind of property, bringing a lot of great historical perspective there as well, I think it was a it's a very good agreement before you, it's great for the county, it's and it allows us to kind of pivot and continue to give the high-quality services we do with courthouses. It's actually interesting, related to this matter, in fact, I had cause to be over at the Superior Court speaking with put Timothy staff the other day, and they were explaining to me how high our reputation is amongst the users of the trial court who are within the county system as far as the quality of facilities we give them. Obviously, this building needing renovation is a unique case, despite its engineering structure as well, and we've come to the end of that, but I think there's a, there's a great deal of pause to be given for all the work done to keep a building with its issues going, and the heat waves and things like that by the maintenance staff, as well as other county staff as well, so this is before you the end, and these are the, these are the documents and the instruments to effectuate that, and we move on from there.
Okay, any questions or comments, commissioners?
It's kind of amazing to think it's really happening. You know, I mean, if you stop for a minute, and I know we've all been working at it, everybody's been working at it, and all of a sudden, it's like, it's here, this is really happening, this is really taking place, you know?
You know, we've all had other government experience, and sometimes the government isn't, you know, and we're part of it, moves fast, but this so far we've gone very well, and, you're right, it, it seemed to be out there for a year or two, and then boom. But we're here, council is ready, he says the stage is ready.
I reviewed all the documents in real safety point, fine, but do you need three votes, is it three votes we need to make? Oh, because I have a paper, it's gonna be voted, 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 so, do you want those motions?
I think, yeah.
I think it would be more appropriate.
Yeah, I would make them.
You know, because it says voters, we need to make the motion.
So I would make three motions, and then just, we won't let you leave before you sign two, right, so.
And before. And before we take this motion, I want to add that subsequent to this, that our maintenance department is going to stay on under a separate agreement and took such time as the court moves out, or the demolition start, so how long that is, we don't know. We built this relationship with D.C.A.M., so that's the way, and we can, you know, we're anxious to work with them and handle it, so. I mean, um, I assume the biggest hurdle, but it's their hurdle is, you know, they're going to get an alternate site because they're going to build on that site, so. But we'll do everything we can to help them, but our team is going to stay there and, you know, John and his team will maintain the building, and I notice, you know, they talk about bats and fixtures, everything is all laid out there, so.
And that continues until such time as they find the alternate site.
That's correct.
Or they, whatever, so, yeah. Yeah, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, which one is first, do you want us to read it into the record or? Go ahead, sure.
I'll move that we, uh, the county commissioners at a meeting held today authorized the following, first, we authorize Chairman Joseph Shea on behalf of the County of Norfolk to execute forthwith the purchase and sale agreement in its rider between the County of Norfolk and the Commonwealth of Mass by his designate Carol Gladstone, Commissioner of Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance for the purchase and sale of the Francis Exfilati District Court of East Norfolk located at one Dennis Ryan Parkway, Quincy, Norfolk County, Mass. O two one six nine for the agreed purchase price of ten million, four hundred thousand dollars, so moved.
Second. Any other comment? Motion made and seconded, all in favor? It's number one, number two.
Second, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we authorize Chairman Joseph P. Shea on behalf of the County of Norfolk to execute forthwith disclosure statement attached to the P. and S. agreement between the County of Norfolk and Commonwealth of Mass described above as exhibit A, so moved.
Second. Second matter, on a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And third motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move them to adopt, ratify and confirm all actions heretofore taken by the commissioners in connection with the matter, which is the subject of the foregoing vote, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further comment? All in favor of the third matter, motion? Aye, it is unanimous.
So there's your three votes, and then we have to sign this, I suppose.
We're going to sign today, and I'm going to sign at quarter or six with, with council prior to our Aggie school meeting tonight. Number six.
Do you have that to sign?
Is there anything else?
Yes.
That's it?
I have this, this before you leave.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yes.
That, how many do you have to sign today?
Two, we're just asking for two. And yeah, you, you, uh, two commissioners are only signing that vote document, and the chair is signing the other.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, next is personal matters, we have one in I.T. and one in Commissioner's office, and then a number at the agricultural school, so.
Hi, Mr. Tim, we have information technology, uh, it's a it's a notice of promotion, uh, for Daniel Caparata as Deputy Chief Information Officer, uh, late stated effective seven, three, twenty-three. Did the C.I.O. want to talk on that, or?
Any comments, Sam?
I've, we've mentioned it before, I can tell you more about it if you want.
I'm, I'm good, I'll second.
I think we're ready, Dan.
I'll second it.
Was that part of your presentation when you were doing the?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, but this brings me to, I should have asked this before.
Yeah.
When we promote people within the budget like Dan Caparata, is it necessary to do this exercise today? Because I always thought the budget being a document that is this just further standard, we need a blue, I suppose I should be asking Michelle, but.
We'll, we'll take a look at it, well, okay. No, you read, I had a question mark on there, that was the, uh.
That this, uh, that, this personal matter is because of, of the budget change. You're correct, and there are a number of things we have on here, like change of address, or sometimes on, we're sometimes on these, uh, these personal papers as well, so we.
Well, we, we, that came up a couple of years ago when we started going back to it, and, and I, I, I think I, I'm a believer in it, because you know, but I didn't, I didn't know if this is per, it's not them trying to.
No, I don't think so.
Now, the next one is absolutely.
The job title is, has changed, so he's.
Okay, all right, all right, now the next one.
It's sent?
Yes, I didn't send a note yet, no, no, I wanted to see.
I thought he was going to be here today, is he, can he be here next week?
Um, maybe he, uh, he doesn't send until, he's, he's still working, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, next one, uh, is under the Commissioner's office. Commissioner Stady, it deals with the sealer of weights and measures, I'm going to ask.
Lunch in the program, right?
We can get him here, he's not coming, he's not coming till July tenth, but we can act today. That also was in the budget.
The other question I had, all right.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll move the appointment of William Mullen, William M. Mullen of Abington, Mass as the Sealer of Weights and Measures, uh, for the rate stated effective, effective date seven, ten, twenty-three, so moved.
Second. And that also was covered in the fiscal twenty-four budget.
That's correct.
He is a trained sealer. So we don't have to go back square one, we can hit the ground running, so to speak, I mean, it's going to be you know, some familiarity with the, with the geography, so to speak, but Bill's been working hard on this, and I'm kind of excited, I hope we can get him in here a week after, or next week, I mean, he's working his, he worked for Tom to have him, so he's working today, so.
So I beg the question.
Go ahead, I know what you're going to say.
He's going right to camp.
No. Well, I have to.
Although Franklin's. Let him come here soon.
No, I meant to say, though, is he going to hit the ground running, he doesn't need training, he's all set to go.
As a sealer, no.
They'll be, they'll be on board, I, I.
Geography, where am I going, you know?
We can cover this.
When he comes, he can. All right, he'll lay out what he's going to, all right.
And I think maybe either you or someone is going to ride with him for a while, take him to town, or, you know, maybe one of us could go to or something, but I mean.
She's showing where it can.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I bet.
I know where every gas pump is, right now, don't, don't you worry.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, this is exciting, but we need to vote it.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to speak on that?
Question.
Onboarding or just?
The blue paper?
Yeah, sure.
According to, um, the personnel rules and regulations. Section E, rules of procedure. Do you want me, do you want me to read it?
No, I believe you, okay, I just had a question, I had.
So we're doing it right?
You are.
Thank you.
Well, it doesn't matter what my former experience was, my former experience was, if a new job went in the city of Quincy and it was in the budget, that's a council, and that was considered, you know.
Until we change this policy.
That's not, no, I don't want to change the policy necessarily, it's fine.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, that's all, but that's a good answer, you know, we're just checking.
Stay because you're, you're in the next, anyway.
Oh, I'll bring my stuff in then, I'll be right back.
So, but, if I may. Before we get to Norfolk County, my question here was, should the trustees have voted this first? And then it would come to the Commissioner's office next week? That's my only thought on it.
We haven't done that.
We haven't done this.
No, we haven't.
I really thought we should table it, I had a big question on that, the trustee could vote this tonight, I think.
What, the, the agricultural ones?
Right.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've never done that.
But these, these were in your budget, they.
Well, that's my question, why, you know.
Well, see, here we go again, all right.
Yeah, but we don't have, the trustees have another function at, at the, at the school, at the high school.
If I, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, you, you are the personnel board, the three of you sitting here today, so this is, this is where you approve them, so in the same manner that the, these, these were approved in the budget, so. And now, and now, and now you, now you take action here as Commissioner slash Personnel Board, and that's what actually.
Oh, yeah, okay, you actually, oh, because actually, it was approved in the budget, the trustees.
It was, I mean, it was.
Yeah, I did, I didn't see it broken up like that.
A little confusing, but it was.
It was.
And that breakout is specifically where it happens in this space.
So it did go trustees, commissioner, now personnel.
It went trustees, commissioner, advisor board, and now, now you're
Okay.
Taking action on the, the authority given in the.
Okay.
With that said, if you want, without further ado, we can move these.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then we go back to student workers, all, all at the high schools, sure, let's move them.
So I'll move the notice of increase for the following individuals who work at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, I'm just going to say for the rate stated in the memo to us, and all of these are effective date, I believe they're all the same, seven, one, twenty-three. So I'll move that this, uh, pertained, this motion include Sean G. Crowley of Drakehead, Mass, Peter D. Murphy of Walpole, Mass, Mark Coit, Coit of North Smithfield, that's our I.T. guy, right? Robin J. Van Roche of North Providence, John Martin of Marion, Mass, Jessica Demora of Berkeley, and Kim Catan Skelly of Sharon, wait, one more, and Dawn Karen of Plainville. All those individuals as listed, uh, will be for the rate increase, uh, as described effective seven, one, twenty-three.
Second.
That's sufficient?
Yes, second.
Motion seconded, and this is in their capacity as administrators at Norfolk County. All in favor?
Aye.
Those three, those seven or eight are approved.
The next group, Mr. Chairman, are contingency employment, so I'll move.
Temporary workers.
These are all going to be moved as a contingency employment at the Aggie School. I believe they're all student workers for summer camp, so I'll move the following, uh, motion. Uh, Quinn Flaherty of Boston, Mass, Elizabeth Walsh of Marshfield, Mass, Ava Hammond of East Bridgewater, Claire Amador of Quincy, Mass, Emily Marsette of Bellingham, and Sean Pugly of Dorchester, Mass. All for student worker, camp worker at the rate stated effective seven, three, twenty-three, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Those are seven, now we have two at the Wallaston.
And at Wallaston, I will move two appointments, motion for contingency appointment, uh, at Wallaston for Anthony Consalvo of High Park and Richard Driscoll of Dorchester, Mass, uh, for the rate stated in both the effective date six, fourteen, twenty-three, so moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, excuse me if I missed it, but we got talking about the sealer, I don't think we picked the boat.
Oh.
I think you're right. So can we go back to appointment of William Mullen of Abington as the County Sealer of Weights and Measures effective seven, ten? I didn't talk, no. We got off talking about it, and I didn't call.
You're right, no, 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 you're right, be very happy to move the appointment of William Mullen of Abington, Mass as our Sealer of Weight and Measures for the rate stated effective seven, ten, twenty-three, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, I have requested that he can get in, come in and say hello any Wednesday before the tenth.
That's good.
July, all in favor?
Aye.
It's exciting, thank you. Now, payroll expense warrants for approval including Opera, which we already did, but that's all right, we'll do them again.
Move the following for approval, payroll to county, twenty-three dash fifty, the amount one hundred fifty thousand, four hundred seventy dollars, fifty-four cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second, Mr. Chairman, move approval for the payroll of the school, twenty-three dash fifty, parentheses, twenty-five, the amount of three hundred fifty-six dollars, five hundred three dollars, twenty-seven cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
Following are Opera Awards, which we already discussed, move approval for Opera for Cohasset, twenty-three dash forty-seven, the amount two hundred thousand dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Second, Opera Award for Franklin, the lines twenty-three dash forty-seven, the amount is seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. And the last Opera Award of the day is for Medfield, Opera Award twenty-three dash forty-seven is the line, and it's the amount three hundred seventy thousand dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Final one, expense of the county of O-six dash O-two, twenty-three, move approval for forty-six thousand, seventy dollars and ninety-five cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is.
That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number twelve, uh, number eleven, Opera Warrants for Approval, we did.
We did.
How about number ten, Report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, do you have any?
I can roll that into this, this is.
Yeah, that's fine. So we'll go by ten, eleven, and twelve, as bid openings, we have none today.
No.
We'll go to thirteen. Uh, in your packet is an explanation from, I found, Michelle Labadini, our Human Resources Director about County Leave of Absence Policy for Approval, we're going to have Michelle explain it, and hopefully, uh, we can go forward with this today, because all of this is in the new, an improved handbook, which has been a monumental task getting it ready, Michelle.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, as you know, um, we've been working on the new employee handbook, and we also, um, worked on this, um, Nova County Leave of Absence Policy with our legal counsel, who, who drafted this policy. We're asking that you read this policy and act on it today, we have had, um, employees that have been out on leave, and when they're out and they go off payroll, it's really hard to get them to pay their portion of the health insurance, so the county has been paying a hundred percent for quite some time, and we need to, uh, follow, um, chapter thirty-two B, which requires after, um, after, uh, thirty days that we, it says it right in the policy too, up to the fifteenth of the month, point. You know, we notify them, we send certified letters, we don't hear back, then they're, they're, they may lose their insurance. We'll need to do something because we're not collecting the funds that we need to collect. Does anyone have any questions?
It's pretty straightforward, but let's, let's talk about it, we're members of the Mayflower Group, that's where our beverage comes from. Did, did you ask at your Mayflower meeting how it's handled?
It's in there, it's in the employer and employee, uh, acknowledgement form, that if payment is not received.
So other, other entities, cities and towns and, and other counties have looked at this also.
I've also talked to them directly, and they said, you know, you can't continue like this, you need to, you need to cancel them. In addition to that, Chairman, I also did a survey with, um, MMA, Mass Municipal Association, with other organizations on how they address this, and everyone said the same thing, that, that after thirty days, you need to cancel them, you need to get, you need to get the payment. Um, and what they do, a lot of them do is when they cancel them, they send out a corporate letter, so they're not canceling them, they can go on corporate and get, get the health insurance that way, but we can't continue paying a hundred percent of, of the premium.
Which is how much roughly per, per, for various?
Yeah, varies, but.
Yeah, I know, various.
I mean, if you're on the PPO plan, um, the thirty percent is four hundred twelve dollars a month, and you times that by eighteen months.
And the county pays.
Pays that share, pays seventy, yep.
So bear in mind.
Thirty percent.
Which is standard. You know, it's co-pay. That's the portion we're talking about.
Still thirty percent, the co-pay is different.
All right, and we have a couple of, you know, a handful of people that is, this is pertinent to.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, okay. Okay, Commissioners, uh, again, I want to, I want to go forward, there's been some time put on this, but, you know, we're not going to go make a, we're not going to publish the manuals or all the stuff, this is, this is small, but it's important, and it's money.
I just, if I may.
Go ahead, sure.
I'm just, when I read it, you know, I, I've been churning this around in my head, and because of some personal things, I couldn't do the research I wanted to, I had a couple of things, you know. I, I wanted to do some additional research on it, at first glance, it just seems a bit hush. At first glance, it doesn't sound as forgiving as we could be as Commissioners, and I, I felt like maybe, you know, instead of just shutting them off, it's just like you get a letter, if you don't pay, you're done, you know, it's like you go to the guillotine. Could we soften that a little bit, and maybe just give like you get a warning, and then maybe if you don't get the payment in thirty days, we cut them off.
Oh, we've had letters, we, this, the, the, the individuals we're speaking to must have received eight letters by now, and five of them were certified.
I don't know, I, you're not listening to me now, hold on. I, I'm saying, but the way this policy is written, correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Right.
The way this policy is written, if somebody misses a payment, they get a letter from us, or they get a letter. So Billy, say, for example, misses a payment, he gets the letter, and if he doesn't get the payment by the end of the month, he's cut off, boom, end of story. I, I'm just saying, personally, I, I feel it's a bit hush, I'd like to soften that a little bit, how about if we don't get a payment by the end of the month, you get a second letter at which time the payment is received by the fifteenth of the following month, you know, if you give them thirty days You know, if you give them thirty days from that, like, minute the first letter, give them, it's hard to.
So you're saying forty-five days?
Forty-five days, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm asking, just to be a little bit more, I don't know.
All right, I don't disagree, but I want, I want, I, if that's the way we're gonna go, we gotta go.
That's the only I'm asking.
We can, we can, we can refer to it with folks, and and you know, it's not something you think of, I never even thought of it. But think about it, and you know, uh in fairness, ninety-nine percent of the people pay it, and.
Right.
Yes.
Uh Mr. Chair, just as point of information, this, this policy was drafted by county legal counsel. Uh and is in, is congruent with the best practices of most of our colleagues. And uh I would just point out that if if um if you were to take her with it, it there is a financial burden that it does cost. This is, this this policy speaks to a a cost drag on the county, which um and it is in line, I think, and Michelle, you did a much wider search of that, but it is in line with what all the other.
That's correct, and and Mayflower.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote it.
It's in line with Mayflower and other municipalities. This is what they do. Um it's written by our legal counsel. It's not written by this office, it's written by legal counsel.
Right, without consultation with the commissioners. I had no input on that, no offense to you.
No.
There was no, there was no discussion. If council, if council came in, I'd be willing to wager, if she heard a voice of a commissioner say, can we have a little more time? She probably say, okay, I don't rule for it, so don't, I don't wanna hear a legal argument, with all due respect, I don't. I'm talking about. I'm talking about, we're working in the public sector, this is not the private sector, and we're having an employee, whoever it might be. They've served the town, they've served the committee, they've served the state, they've served the county, and they ran into a hard time. And they get a letter saying, if we don't get the money, we're cutting you off. Boom, cut and dry. I'd like to give them a couple extra weeks. I don't think it's a big deal.
Michelle, does the letter go up before the thirty days?
Yes.
How many letters go up bef- bef- before?
Well, we don't have a, we don't really have a lot um of people that this affects, it affects a small population. But the po- population it affects have been repeated offenders each year, and we don't budget for this. So that's something I want the commissioners to be aware of. This is not something we budget for. And in the past, we had to ask for a transfer because we needed money for the group insurance, and this is something I just want you all to be aware of, that this is where we're at. I'm asking for a policy so that we can start acting on this, because the letters that we're writing are not being responded to.
And and I understand what you're saying too. We had that discussion. If you don't get something, and you don't put the hammer down, at some point, the perpet- it perpetuates itself. All I'm saying is, in this policy that we're gonna adopt, starting this day forward, I'd like to see a little bit more latitude, just a little bit more. Just a bit. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I disagree. I disagree. I mean, this 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 came from uh council, and it's consistent with Mayflowers, consistent with the others, this power. I mean.
All right, well, that's okay, that's something that's a bit exciting, you know, it's fine. I'm I'm making my opinion, and I I'm not afraid to state it. I'm probably showing a little bit of my compassion, but I read that, you know, and I I know sometimes people, it may not be the people you're talking about. But I can imagine a person would run into a hard time, and they get a letter like that, and it's like, oh my God, I'm gonna have no insurance. And you're right, there's Cobra and other things available, and you would do a super job in that, believe me. This is not directed towards you. I'm directing it to the people who work for us. I just would like to see a little more compassion. Forty, forty-five rather than thirty, that's all I'm asking. I'd I'd vote it today, otherwise I'll have to vote.
No, I'd like to get a vote today, so we, let's let's go to a motion or two and see what we can do. I wanna get this in my look. I think it will help, I, you know, when people are out for whatever reason. This is a minor thing, but it's. Is there, it can, what did it cost us last year, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Okay, that's all right, okay. I don't know that I wanna get that deep into it, I I.
It is definitely through Mr. Chair, a contributing factor.
It really is.
That, that specific line item.
Yeah.
Of volatility over the years.
Yes, but and I also remain saying respectfully, that once a letter is given, that is defined policy, you're gonna see the same effect. It's gonna be, at this point, that might be a matter of somebody scrambling to get it done, or finding some money from family, or getting things lined up. That's all. I think there is tough window.
But uh through, uh through to Michelle, did you, the, when when you signed up, this is the Mayflowers overarching policy, so there, um we're just conversing, we're just really not enforcing what they've already been.
If this was Mayflower policy, why were we doing it all these years? I don't understand. This is Mayflower policy, why were we doing it?
Right, we're finally coming around to doing it now.
Right, cuz we're doing a new book.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we.
We're being consistent with the policy that the people signed up for, when they signed up for Mayflower.
All right, that's what I can understand your reasoning there. All right, but hopefully you understand mine too.
I do.
It really affects most people when they're out, Commissioner. They um, they're still on the payroll, so they're they're getting their insurance deducted from the payroll. This this only really affects the people who went off payroll, and in and their employer, their portion of the insurance, so it is documented in several little different spots that these people sign that that is their responsibility. So this isn't like the first letter they get regarding insurance. They've already signed other commitments that they're required to pay this money back to the their employer, just so you know.
If this was the first time that they knew about it, I'd agree with you, Richard, but this isn't the first time. And letters have gone out, so I'm good. I'll tell you what, I'll make the motion that we adopt the Norfolk County Leave of Absence Policy presented by personal director, uh personal manager, uh Labadini. Um just as written.
Do we have a second?
Uh but can I discuss on that? I'll second it, obviously. Discussion, um and I I agree, number one, we need a policy, and I'm with you, I wanna go forward. So I can make parliamentary wise, an amendment to his motion, okay? So I'd like to, I'm gonna move an amendment to his motion, just same motion, but amended so that it would be, help me out on this, rather than the twenty-fifth, it would be the fifteenth of the following month.
Following, yeah, where it says COVID meth, you wanna, you wanna say following month.
So unless payment is received, Mr. Chairman, unless it's received, and I would put in strike no later than the twenty-fifth of that month, I would like to insert, by virtue of amendment, uh payment, if payment in full is received uh no later than the fifteenth of the following month. So I'm giving them, okay? Do you follow what I'm saying? For motion, that's my amendment. So I second his motion, now it's an amendment.
On the amendment?
Right.
Any more discussion?
Wait, did the amendment get a second?
Well, I think by the, does the amendment need a special assess, second? And I'm not supposed to second it as chairman, correct?
I I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, thank you. On the amendment, any more discussion?
Oh, I've made my case.
All right, I'm gonna take the amendment vote first, and then the original motion, if there's no more discussion. On the amendment, all in favor of the amendment? Aye. Okay, the amendment is to be included. On the original motion to uh implement this as presented and amended.
Next, that's the next motion.
On the.
I mean, you both, the main motion, as amended.
As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay.
No?
Amendment is two to one, and then the motion is two to one to pass, as amended. Okay. Put this aside.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Leave that, that's what we just did.
Thank you.
No, that was good government work, I just disagree, that's.
Request for civic grade at President's Golf Course. One is the Quincy Youth Hockey, and two is Mark A Souci Scholarship Fund, both are frequent flyers with us. Youth Hockey is actually this next week. I think they've been there twenty years. And they were a little late in their request, cuz there's a whole new bunch of offices, and they were apologizing on the phone to us. The second one is the Mark A Souci Scholarship Fund. In their thirty-first year, in honor of Mark Souci. Who lost his life.
I like the motion.
Right, this is a Milton-based group, he's a Milton High School grad, they give seven hundred fifty thousand dollars over thirty-one years, Milton High grads. Motion made in second, all in favor? And the youth hockey motion made in second, all in favor? Okay, two of our frequent flyers, thank you very.
Thanks.
Serving right on. Report of the Assistant County Director.
Hello, Mr. Chair, happy to be here with our report of the Assistant Acting Temporary uh County Director for the next uh two days.
Heard that before somewhere else.
We did reach out uh to the golf course, so we will be receiving a report of Commissioner State's score when he goes to golf.
Oh, man, it'll be terrible.
On, just uh to begin, I'll bounce off a little bit, there's a few.
I might make it to the youth hockey myself, or my yearly.
I I will point out that a- as the chairman acknowledged, Dana's been working really hard. A lot of these organizations have had longstanding tournaments with us, which is a wonderful thing. Um it it brings people to the golf course, it generates interest in membership. Um but there have been, in recent years, he he's been documenting a bit of turnover in the organizations themselves, so uh as board members turn over, we get much later notice. So he's been really pushing people, say, if you, if you wanna apply for the civic rate, do so while in advance, um so he uh.
So he can advertise.
So we can advertise, number one, but also the so we can schedule, but also, more importantly, that we can document your actions a year. So we we create a record uh as well, so.
That's a great idea.
He's attempting to be, um he has superior um customer service interaction skills, but he he's just been kinda chasing those folks, say, you can't tell us a week beforehand that you want the civic rate, get the get the um, get your letters in, so they can come to the sport, so uh we we've kind of more regularized the process a little more. So I I'll leave this meeting and inform Dana of your actions, and kinda have, send the scan letters back.
Does he have a certain date, like a month before?
He he asks them as soon as possible, but it it, he pushes for at least a month, because, but many of them, you know, if you if you recall, we would start getting these requests in February or uh July, um so.
Well, the Mr. Souci's uh current is July, but the youth Quincy Hockey is.
This week.
Yeah.
It did come last week. Right after the meeting.
But that's a week.
I know.
It it should be, you gotta be kind of, without a date, and maybe it's gonna be extra work, either Kyle or you or someone should fall over these people. We need more advanced time.
We really, you know.
Yeah.
Working with the new folks, so he's doing that in a good way.
Makes sense.
So we'll focus on that. Um working with Assistant Building Maintenance Director, Big Doni. He he did have the folks clean up around the premises here in six fourteen High Street. There's been a lot of work done across the street in the parking lot, they were able to remove the the housing for the old light fixture. Uh they took out all the metal rods for the old space numbers that have rotted away, so that uh area is.
We're not putting new space numbers up, are we?
No. But it was just, I think, just.
I'd love to improve and pave it, but I don't necessarily.
I think it's on the, it's on.
But we haven't got the money right now.
But just as as far as the cosmetic and the the cleaning of that, that that's been going on uh this week, obviously, uh the action took, uh Quincy District Court was uh very crucial, just to to pivot back to ARPA, we have a lot in the queue. Uh CLA and our our Assistant ARPA Director have been working really hard, especially on those communities that are we have yet to hear from, we know where every one of them are, I know there's a five point five, more than that, million dollar uh Brooklyn application, it's close to the finish line. Avon is going out to bid for their Public Works project, which will get their entire award, so we'll, we we've been dialoguing with them all along, we know what's there, they've gotta do the bidding process first before they can come back to us, but that will completely wipe out, much like Ra- uh Randolph, Holbrook, uh Medfield and Millis. Uh um Medway and Millis, they they're a one uh application town, so we're working with them, they just had a new town administrator appointed on Monday, they, he began works, we've we've done the reach out there, so all the key figures there are are in place. We, I know Waymouth will have fairly large awards, as well as Branch Tree, has got some in the queue as well, so there's a lot of uh a serious amount of of funding is moving through the process, so I think we'll see as the summer moves on a a large jump in what's going out the door as well, so I think everybody's aware of those things, and I know Plainville has, is another community that we have not seen yet, they have, I think, last count four in there, so that I think they're gonna be a a a group that we'll see all together, and they'll get a large portion of their award as well, so we've been working closely with all those stakeholders as well, to make sure that progresses. Uh other things, I think, it's been fairly quiet this week. On the weights and measures piece, we have uh as as I say, individual who has been hired with with high uh recommendations and good and good references, who who will come in to see you. But we're currently mapping out what the first few weeks looks like. Obviously, there's there's personnel onboarding, there's a technological onboarding. Working with Sam and his staff to make sure he he's all set up with his laptop and the like, and his commission and their wisdom. Purchase software, uh WinWam, which is a state-of-the-art system used across the country to track weights and measures, so instead of this, this vocation in general has been a paper-driven, spreadsheet-driven uh data tracking, and so we're almost out ahead of where the state is, because the state's moving in this direction to really digitize. So we hope we can have a lot of easily accessible data for this person who's gonna be working off a cellphone and a laptop a lot in the field as well. And one of the things we're gonna be working with, uh Nancy Rockwell's been amazing in helping us procure the weights themselves, and because there are, there are lag times, we're working now on making sure we have the seals themselves for the, those inspections to take place.
Where do you, do you have to keep, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you have to keep them in a certain place?
I, there'll, there will be a lot to offer, if if you'd like to steal a fifty-pound weight, being a guest, but the the real important pieces.
He's the one person that could do it.
Suspect number one. But the the real important thing is those, uh the weights come in, there's some weight kits that looks like a briefcase. They have to be out of the truck in a fairly temperature-controlled space every night. Because these, all of these weights are specifically calibrated and signed off by the state at their facility in Ashland. So as, uh even before this person is onboarded, if some of the weights come in, we'll take them out to Ashland to be certified. But you can't say leave them in the car overnight in the winter, cuz that can affect um what they are, so you have to uh take good care of them, and that's why we we hired someone with a background, number one. But what we'll also be doing is building in Canton, I I I will, I will single out, because they've been the most aggressive in in the need for this process, really de- beginning to develop a a schedule. We obviously know what is each, each device, each gas pump has to be inspected in in a given timeframe. But what we we will be building in in the first weeks of this camp, of this program is really a, is the roadmap on what what needs to be done when, so that this person can be as efficient as possible, perhaps it's, you go to Daisy's Deli in Franklin in the morning, and you swing through Canton in the afternoon and get get the stop and shop, or or what have you. But we'll be working with the due dates for each device, and and really plotting out where these locations are, like the towns are are giving us vital information about what, what exists within their town, and and as a business has a scale there to report that to the town, so we'll be then taking that information, layering it across the towns that we're working on, and all the towns now. They have uh intermunicipal agreements, which Scott drew up, which were based off of the agreements they had with the con. And then uh they're they're pretty boilerplate, but their councils are looking at that now, so as those things are inked, we'll be able to hit the ground running, really, really building a robust program, as we said, is is able to grow, but is also really efficient, so this person is um.
Is it your vision, is it our vision? Does this gentleman like come into here once a week and check in with you, and then go on?
It'll be, it'll be a probably daily check-in with me.
It's gotta be a dedicated phone line, though, so he can.
We're gonna have a.
And the truck has to stay here.
Dedicated phone.
Right, so you will be coming.
The the exact particulars of where it is, but I I think, you know, he he will have a, again, you can't leave the weights in the truck overnight or take it home, so so the people, his day would begin and end here. So it's it's really just a um building on a schedule, so that it's, we're using him as efficiently as possible. How how long does it, if there's a little grocery that has a single scale, that's not a half a day's work, so making sure you you are planning as as well as travel time. We have two communities in the west, two communities in, you know, one north of us, one south of us, Needham and Canton. Um and so just kind of mapping that out.
Can't keep it in a truck.
Right.
The scales, I know, right, so where are you thinking of keeping him here?
So there is a, in the Registry of Deeds building.
Oh.
We have a, a room that has been repainted and wired uh by the maintenance staff, so he he can, that will be his office.
Okay, great, no.
It was, it was full of just
Okay.
everything beforehand, so that's been cleaned up for a few months by but it'll be ready to go. We're also, Patrick Higgins has taken lead in getting the much photographed and much chased by paparazzi truck with its with its high-vis reflectors, which are now pretty standard on all municipal vehicles that are, that are out in the community.
Did we apply for registry for a blue plane, right?
Yeah, Nancy did all that work, so it's. And Patrick's, Patrick has been driving sporadically.
That's fine, that's.
For jobs, to keep it.
And uh it'll be properly marked, right?
The the requisite safety markings on the thing now, but yeah, that person will probably almost certainly begin and end every day with us. And um we'll be working to schedule him in the most efficient way possible. There are also things um we'll rat out, with how it was in, but I was getting gas the other day, and the gas pump body was getting gas, it had not been inspected in a number of years, and it it has to be done every year, so. And they, it has to be done every year, so in the event you're a member of the, the public, there's a, that seal has a complaint.
Did you ever look and see them?
Yeah, I have seen them.
I, I never thought to look. To your point, all I see is, in the supermarket, I see it everywhere.
Um, but. There's always Robert Silver or something, Ken, I don't know who he was.
Right, there's.
Obviously, I need it everywhere.
He's probably the case.
He was involved with the state guy. So what would, in, in those, a part, part and parcel of that job is also responding to complaints like that. If someone says, hey, I got gypped at the, the Franklin Farm Stand, you, in a timely fashion, within a day or so, have to be out there uh, re-inspecting, following up on the complaint.
That's very, do they do compliance markets?
They, if, if there's a scale, it depends on where, where the farm is. So if the scale's in Canton, if, if the farm's in Canton, the scales are Canton's responsibility, so. A lot of it is tracking, so that's why we're grateful for the, the software that Sam researched because we'll be able to, in a very efficient way, have very strong tracking of this. He's, he's going to be out a lot.
Yeah.
But it, there's going to be a number of deliverables and, and again, the, the divisional standards at the state level has just been so good in working with us, they want to see us succeed there, they're happy we're taking, picking up the slack, they're excited to see something roll like this in the county that's working really closely with them and, and leaning on them to see what, because they're the folks at the end of the day who adjudicate and investigate and oversee this. Develop a good relationship with them, and I think that's what we're going to continue.
Exciting.
So that, that's about, uh, all I have for Director's Board.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have a couple of observations.
Okay.
I think it's important that we get our sealer here, that we go out and give him the support and introduce him in the town that he's going to be most working in originally.
Yep.
After that, maybe in the fall or the beginning of next year, you, we, and when he's out and learned and, and is successful, that we write every other town specifically and tell them that this service is available. Just in case anyone isn't aware of it or falls between the cracks, because.
We, we have three towns who are interested.
I mean, I mean, this may be pleasant, this may be, you know, I may be thinking ahead, but I think, you know, I certainly never worked with a sealer, but I've worked where they always had one, they had two actually, and I used to see them all the time, and I mean, it, there's more to this than, it probably meets the eye. I mean, we just thought of farmer markets, but certainly you think of the supermarket and the deli and you think of the oil man and, but there's, there's other things here and, um.
It has a very high customer service public interface, uh, probably more than any other county.
And then, I'd, I'd like, I'm going to insist that you or someone go out each, in the beginning, go to Canton, go to Franklin, go to Needham, I mean, these alone, just so he doesn't isn't lost, et cetera, et cetera, how the town wants it handled.
Exactly.
You know?
So, and part of the intermeasual agreement is a dialogue with the community square, who, who's the point person? So in the event that someone from Canton complains about that pump at the mobile station, not only are we going to investigate the complaint, but we will fa, then follow up and, and whatever form he, he's filled out to close that out, we'll also go to Canton, so they know. It's, it's probably from our discussions, it'll probably be folks in the building and inspection services department.
Not fair, it might not be fair, but, you know, throw it out there. So my mind would think about, say he goes to Mobile in Canton, so they can share online. So they have like, I think, twelve pumps, right, right? Sam, so he doesn't just test one pump, he has to test them all.
Everyone.
So now I'm thinking, on the other side, how long does that take? Cause, cause Mobile have to shut down while he's doing it?
I think, well, and, and, well, those it's an interesting that you bring that up.
That's all I'm asking.
Those, those are generally done, they generally do them in, in the spring and, and fall, like, so it's, it's like a May.
Yeah.
And a September thing, and that, that's part of the scheduling where he'll just go from pump to pump to pump, so you're not shutting down the whole thing.
Okay.
You, you're, again.
The guy can shut down when he wants.
What the person has is a five-gallon prover, so they, they fill it up to make sure that five gallons comes out, uh, and they're working directly with the manager. It, it's also not a, a spot, you, you've made an appointment.
Making an appointment.
The manager's out there, they turn on the pump.
Yeah.
You fill up five gallons, he attests that it's within the variance of five gallons.
Okay.
And then he push, there, there's a little cart you go over and then you add it back into the, um, the oil, up to, to the fuel
The fuel.
Tanks that are on your route, so you do that with each one. So basically, you just, you, you lock out a a fuel pump at a time.
And they have to do it once a year or twice a year?
I believe you pump, so once a year.
So this state, like what about deli counter, do you know what that is?
I believe those, those are also once a year as well.
Once a year.
Then what they also do is the scanners.
Yeah.
Have to be checked for variances, there's a hundred. You take a hundred, they will go around with the, the manager of the, whatever, pick, pick a, uh, pick a supermarket and take a hundred items off the shelves.
Right.
Of, from various departments. They'll open up a net, a register and they'll have to show that the item, the price of the item on the shelf is what the scan, it comes up as.
Okay.
And you can have two that do not match, so you, you need ninety-eight out of a hundred of them for, in order to pass that device. So that's, but again, those, it may be the case that you can do, uh, a couple of single-scale delis in the morning and then do a market in the afternoon and it's all about scheduling.
I understand, this would be a great opportunity for us to learn too, when he comes in, give us some reports once in a while.
I mean, I'm, I'm very optimistic.
And talk it up, this would be great. I'm learning a lot, you've listened to this.
And there will be, there'll be an annual report.
Yeah.
Every year that goes to the town, this is where everyone, we'll obviously tell the town immediately if somebody fails as well, just keep them informed. But, but, but we're doing all of the, we're doing all the work reporting to the state.
How about the charge?
Right, that's.
How's that going to be?
Right, how about the revenue? Are we going to be even Steven on this or?
So they, each, um, each community is paying us a single fee.
Right.
And then the, the people we inspect pay, uh, individual fee, there's a fee table in each town. Many of the towns are looking at their fee tables currently because.
They haven't looked at in ten years.
Right, and the, the price is going up, um, and we've been working with the Quincy sealer, who's also the head of the Association of Sealers, to kind of inform towns of, hey, you know, you're charging forty dollars less for a gas pump than any of your neighbors. So we don't, we don't do the billing, we basically would give, um, well, here's your, here's your bill to the town of Canton. And they settle up with it, the Canton treasure collector.
But that goes to Canton. So we're not, we're not getting that money from that.
That's correct.
You only get the money from Canton.
We get, we get a one-time fee.
So, with all due respect, so we have four people, right? It's Canton, Franklin, uh.
Canton, Franklin, Needham, and we're working with Rentham.
Rentham. Will those four, will those four equal his salary for this year or is that kind, we're not looking at that yet?
Well, as, as we talked about during the budget, there's also, um, we, we take in, we took that salary out of Patrick's.